If I call this meeting to order, please silence your cell phones so that we can conduct business and stand for the invocation by Councilmember Beal.
You, Council President, please join me in our words prayer followed by the pledge. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. In thy name we pray, in thy name we pray, amen. Your presence is great, and your presence is strong, and your presence is everlasting, and your presence is everlasting. Your worship is great, and your worship is strong, and your worship is everlasting. Your worship is great, and your worship is strong, and your worship is everlasting. We do the reward for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comments?
There's none.
Communications?
None, other than the fact that Christmas in the city was canceled, and they're going to replace it instead of a week contest similar to the scarecrows.
The next council conference and business meeting will be held Monday, December fourteenth, at seven P.M., City Hall, Council Boardroom, second floor, city center. It's the holidays, so that's why we're having two meetings on that night. And I have a proclamation to present, and we have actually three. So we'll start with Matthew J. Worth. You're gonna be really missed, if you know that, that's good. I think I've worked with you pretty much your whole career.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So whereas the city of Batavia would like to recognize Matthew J. Worth for his thirty-three years of service. Matt Worth has served Director of Public Works for the city of Batavia since 2016, with a year serving as interim city manager. Do you remember that well? Matt Worth, the Director of Public Works, has been in charge of Bureau of Maintenance, Streets Sewers and Parks, Bureau of Water, Wastewater, which includes water plants, sewer plant, and facilities, Bureau of Inspections, Code Enforcement, and Bureau of Engineering, totaling over sixty employees. Whereas Matt Worth, short time as Director of Public Works, he's managed five federal-funded projects, which are Summit Street, Pedestrian Way, Preventative Maintenance, Healthy Schools, and Alcat Trail. Where streets sidewalks and trails have been reconstructed, and along with these federally-funded projects, Matt managed multiple water wastewater facility projects such as water plant roof, the beam repair, central pump station control project, ballot removal of the wastewater treatment plant, sanitary sewer on Sage Street, numerous various things, including the city center roof improvements, over five million dollars worth of improvements totally. Matt Worth also assisted city in concluding the mall litigation, invested thirty years with the mall association. He also led the roof replacement project for the mall. Any leaks? Yep. It's a part so good. Good. You did a good job on that, then. Exhibited strong leadership and creativity in shepherding a forty-year county city water and sales tax agreement. That was a paper. In 2018, Matt won both the Regional Genesee Valley, American Public Works Association, and New York State Director of Public Works Awards, has taken the time to share his knowledge with his colleagues and government officials, encouraging them to further their careers in education. So therefore, be it resolved, the city council of Batavia takes extreme pride in recognizing Matt Worth for his dedicated and excellent success as Director of Public Works with over thirty-three years of service for the city, and acknowledges his many accomplishments.
Yeah, just, I am incredibly thankful to the city of Batavia, it's been a great place to work. It's a lot to raise my family, and the community that I grew up in, has been with amazing, remarkable people. The citizens of the city of Batavia are just so lucky, because some of the people that work here, how dedicated they are, how thankful, and of course, you know, all the work, the nights, the time you call away, that doesn't work without your family, so thanks to my wife Joan for being part of that as well. But again, it's been a great experience, and I'm just extremely thankful to the city of Batavia. Thanks so much.
He'll be back, just to get the buckets.
We got that water line replaced on Union Street, I don't have to come back anymore. That was my bane.
And thank you for mentioning it. Thank you to your family for sharing you with us all these years, so I appreciate it.
A lot of times, they were glad to do it, so.
Firefighter Tom Douglas?
Yeah. Now, as you're moment of fame. This is a proclamation, city of Batavia, whereas Tom Douglas is retired as a firefighter for the city of Batavia's fire department on October fifteenth, twenty twenty, after twenty-two years of service for the city of Batavia. And whereas Thomas began his career on August first, nineteen ninety-eight, as a member of the city of Batavia Fire Department's ambulance service, in September two thousand, he was promoted to firefighter. Tom brought a great deal of experience to the job, shared his knowledge of Genesee County's emergency operations with fellow employees, and was a senior man in the first platoon, mentoring new firefighters for many years. Tom took great pride in his detailed knowledge of the fire department, take care of it, and mentored new firefighters to do the same. Whereas Thomas was the driving force in implementing the fire department's emergency medical service program, serving as a certified lab instructor, certified instructor coordinator, and course administrator for the city of Batavia's emergency medical services, ensuring Batavia residents to have the best quality EMS for years to come. Now therefore, be it resolved, in a true spirit of appreciation for many years firefighter, Tom Douglas, has served as a city of Batavia employee, the city council of the city of Batavia hereby makes this proclamation to sincerely thank him for his twenty-two years of dedicated service to our community, and to wish him well in his retirement.
Well, I'd like to thank everybody. I can say, boy, it was a fantastic and great career. It was a lot of changes, and we all know, we all started back out at the ambulance days, and what we progressed to it, and the situation we're in now, we gotta go. Another family, and I would like to thank my family. There was a lot of hours, I was gone, and they were nice enough to put up with it, especially my wife Debbie, she kept the home fires going, I was out, working or playing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Whereas Timothy Stangle has retired as a firefighter from the city of Batavia's fire department on May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty, after twenty years of service. And whereas Timothy Stangle began his career on March twenty-seventh, two thousand, Tim brought a great deal of experience to the job, and has become a mentor to new employees by sharing his knowledge of the department and of the firefighting profession. And whereas Timothy Stangle was a positive role model to all of the firefighters throughout his twenty-year career, assigned to fighting first platoon. He always displayed a calming presence, no matter how stressful the situation. His professionalism and positive attitude will be missed by his coworkers. Now therefore, be it resolved, in a true spirit of appreciation, for the many years firefighter Timothy Stangle has served as a city of Batavia employee, the city council of the city of Batavia hereby makes this proclamation to sincerely thank him for his twenty years of dedicated service to our community, and to wish him well in his retirement.
Thank you very much. You know what, all I can say is, it was a privilege to serve the residents and city of Batavia, working with city management, city fire, you know, leadership, and my coworkers that are here tonight to support me. It was a great career, and I'm just blessed. Thank you.
Now there's a presentation by firefighter Tom. Did you want to come up and make some kind of donation, or is that something?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure, go ahead. Whatever you need.
All right. I trust her, I think. I'd like to thank every, you know, like I said, we worked at a very changing job, and I've seen a lot of changes in that stuff. And I've always believed in serving the community, everybody will be, I've done many community jobs, I love the community around here. What I decided was, when I ended my career, that I've, we've always both believed that whenever you're done something, you should give something back. And that, so I definitely before I retired, that I wanted to give something back to the guys in the city, something like that. After talking, we decided, picked an item, I talked with my lieutenant call, and Captain Martin came up with an idea, talked it over with Anna Flumble, as president of the union, what I wanted to do, and I talked with the chief, and then we all came to an agreement. What we'd like to do, me and my wife would like to present to the city of Batavia Fire Department. We'd like to present with ten personal thermal imaging cameras. The guy, if you have to change, we don't fire to change, this will help to keep straight. I know we all worked with budget and constraint, I thought this would do, which we could gave a few more, but I want to respect and thank out the Justin from Municipal Emergency Solution, correct? And then, he also was very generous when it came to me by, or help by, you know, and that. We'd like to, guy can use them, we move with the chief now, you can put them in service and hopefully to keep you guys safe, you can do, just here allow them to, we have several thermal imaging cameras on the rigs, but you know, if we get a big incident, we got, we cover a large warehouse or something, trying to find something, we got two or three cameras, and that's it. Now each one of the guys on crew, will you be able to have extra cam, will have a personal camera that go in to either help them find what they need, or help to help them get out, or locate a body, and things like that, so. With that, I'll present these to you guys.
Thank you very much. It's a very nice gesture, thank you very much.
May I say a word?
Go ahead.
I'd just like to take a moment and say thank you to Tom and Debbie. Unless you're in our line of work, you don't really realize what an invaluable tool this is. As Tom alluded to, we have three thermal imaging cameras right now, but the ability for each firefighter to carry their own personal thermal imaging camera while they're inside of a structure, doing an initial size up, it's invaluable. And this is an example of Tom and Tim as senior firefighters, even in retirement, they're still giving, they're still mentoring, and to lose their experience hurts us. And what we're really proud of is that these young firefighters here, they learned, two of the best, and as a result, they're gonna, they've learned how to become a senior firefighter, because they're gonna do things better, they're gonna do things more smartly. And this tool right here, these ten tools, are gonna enhance getting them to where you guys are. So on behalf of the department, I can't say thank you enough for the generosity and for your leadership and your service to our department. So, thank you very much.
Next, I put on here, city of Batavia, city court part-time judge. So what I'm asking for is council's approval to direct the city manager to start the advertisement for that, so that we can start soliciting resumes, and then, once that process happens, then we will get together and conduct the process where we will interview and go through that hiring process for the part-time judge. So, any, is everyone in favor of that and consensus with that? So Rachel, you understand to start advertising for the part-time judge and start that process now?
Yes, I will.
Okay, thank you very much. The investment policy.
Thank you, Council President. Members of council, you remember back in May twenty twenty, it feels like five years ago, the city council added Bank of Buffalo, which was formerly Bank of Akron, to the list of designated depositories, and at such time, the city clerk, along with our investment firm, Three Plus One, had recommended that the council might want to consider a change to allow the manager to add other banking institutions, when there were opportunities for the city to move funding for a better rate. So I am coming back with this resolution that would allow the city manager to add banking institutions to the investment policy, and at the next meeting, they would inform city council of what banks they have added. And you do see the investment policy every year during the approval of the budget book.
Discussion on that? What would be the checks and balances on that, Rachel? I mean, like, if you just added a bank with someone other than you know, would you be working with Heidi?
So currently, the recommendations come directly from Three Plus One, the investment firm we're working with, who helps us find the best rates, whether they're in CDs, treasuries, or in different types of accounts. So to be able to move quicker, because typically it'd take up to a month to get through the council process, we would add a bank, and then we would be required to tell the council at the next, or the manager would at the next meeting.
Okay, so there's, obviously it would come from a recommendation, and it would look good, and you obviously would talk with Heidi and make that decision, and then you would add that, so you could invest quicker then, in other words, and make some, otherwise it could be a month and that opportunity would pass, and.
Would you be discussing this with your finance officer, too?
Yes, Lisa Neary is also in all the meetings with Heidi and I and Three Plus One. Yes, thank you both.
Yeah, the more people we can hang, if it goes bad.
Yeah, I mean, it makes sense that there's more than one set of eyes looking at it.
Absolutely.
Because there could be two weeks, or in the summer, it could be a month before a council meeting, and I would feel a little more comfortable if there was other people involved, so it wasn't just one person making the decision. But if that's the way the process is set up, then I'm comfortable with it, then. Anyone else?
That's great.
Okay.
Should we include that in the resolution of the, in agreement with the finance officer?
Yeah. Could you, could you add that? Add that Heidi and the finance officer Lisa would have to, you're, obviously you'd get a consensus amongst yourself that this was a good investment, and then council would be notified with, at the next meeting.
Yep, absolutely. So in agreement with the city clerk treasurer and deputy director of finance.
Now, when you notify us, would we do a resolution to make it a permanent, or are you just notifying us?
No, the notification would come in the manager's report to council.
Okay.
So you would see the list of institutions at the end of the year, the end of the fiscal year, when you're starting the new budget here.
Right.
And even the OSC doesn't actually, you don't actually have to list your depositories, it's a practice that the city of Batavia has done, I'm guessing, for years and years and years.
Right.
So.
Okay. Anything else, then? So we in consensus to move that to the business meeting for a vote?
Yes.
Okay, that gets moved over. Property access for remedial action two sixty-seven Bank Street?
Yes, members of council, as you recall, the DEC is working on the Bay of Batavia Iron property. They previously contacted the city of Batavia about accessing two ninety-nine Bank Street, which is a large parcel of the city of Orleans. They now have asked to access two sixty-seven Bank Street, which is a small area to park in, a lot out the front, as part of the remediation that they're gonna undertake in the spring. It's pretty straightforward, we've already granted access for two ninety-nine Bank Street. This is simply a request from DEC, as they are authorized to do under the state super fund law, to access two sixty-seven Bank Street to perform the remediation. Remediation at this point, as far as we know, is gonna be bid this fall, and that will be conducted in the spring. City's protected through insurance and access agreements with the contractor, so it's pretty straightforward, pretty standard, and the good news is DEC will be addressing the remediation starting next spring.
And this isn't gonna affect any operations or anything there?
I mean, no, we don't anticipate.
It's just that one little strip, as I can see in the map, it's a little strip along that one edge there.
Right. We did ask that question, and based on timing, we don't anticipate it's gonna be an issue.
Okay.
George, excuse me, what are they planning on doing when they process properties in front of the stadium?
They might have to remediate some of the soil underneath some of those parking spots, because there may have been a little bit of offsite impacts associated with the site.
So they're gonna be testing the actual parking lot in front of the stadium?
I wouldn't say testing as much as removing some of that soil as part of the remediation of the Bay of Bank Street, Batavia Iron property. In other words, DEC is directing the remediation through its contractors of the Batavia Iron property.
Right.
There was some offsite impacts as well, because of the nature of fill and things of that sort. They're gonna work on the adjoining property, which would include some of the parking spot problem.
Okay, and then they'll re-surface it?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, concerns? So we consensus to move that to the next business meeting? Okay, that gets moved over. Fiber broadband connectivity product?
Yes, so currently, the city connects our facilities with a point-to-point, multi-point radio-controlled wireless system. It's my understanding that the city's used this technology for many years, and when we first started using it, it was state-of-the-art. However, many different variables affect the internet speeds, especially at Bureau of Maintenance, including weather and the ability of the satellite dishes to connect. So we have been looking at a fiber project to connect all of our buildings onto a fiber network and give high-speed internet to all of the facilities. An RFP went out for fiber internet services, and we've received nine responses back. We are reviewing them for the best price, best value, and best solution for internet, and have started to interview the top firm, actually, today. So we would like to bring this back to council, and I'll certainly send you an email prior to letting you know on the scoring and the pricing, but we'd like to bring it back to council on a business meeting on December fourteenth, so we can get the project up and running. This was not one of the cuts that we identified in the COVID-19 austerity budget, this was a project we needed to move forward with. If one of the radios does break, it could be anywhere between fifteen and thirty-five thousand dollars of investment. So we're hoping to be able to connect these facilities. We will have operational costs associated with this project, but they were planned for in the twenty twenty-one budget, and will also be planned for in the twenty-one, twenty-two budget.
How old is the existing radio system now?
I don't know. Is it easy to do now, by any chance? The radios are, they are all different in age right now. I would say anywhere from five to ten years.
Because I, I mean, it's been seven since I left, and it was at least five years before then, when they first started putting them in.
Mm-hmm.
So I mean, if they're getting, they're getting old, they're getting to the point, what if they break now, without anything?
Right.
Now we're stuck either with, you know, whatever, I think it's a good idea to get it ahead of it before it breaks down, and we gotta fix it. Any other questions or concerns on that?
I have a question. Out of the RFPs that we've received, are there any local companies that have been?
Yes, there are. Empire is a local company, I believe Spectrum is local, Firstland is an upstate New York company, Markezi Computer Projects partnered with an upper firm. So yes, there are, I'd say, local, regional, upstate companies, yes. And then there are some upstate companies that pledge their different solutions as well.
So that's why I see in the resolution, it has X's there, so that information will all be filled in before we vote on it. If it's not ready for the fourteenth, then you'll, it'll be at a future meeting?
It would come to the January, I believe, eleventh.
So if it's one of the future meetings, it's gonna have all the information?
At a business meeting, correct.
Right. All right, any other questions or concerns? So we in consensus to move that to a future business meeting? Okay. Council meeting schedule for twenty twenty, you've been provided with that list, did anyone notice any errors, or any mistakes, or anything that doesn't fall on the proper day? Okay, so are we in consensus, any discussion on that? Anyone have anything to say about it? Are we in consensus and to move that to the business meeting for a vote?
Yes, sir.
Okay, there it goes. Okay, Youth Bureau Path Forward, due to some confusion, I put this on, it was my request, put that on there. So basically, what I'm asking is for direction from council to direct the city manager to, or not, but I would request that she pursues cost-saving measures involving the youth bureau, youth board, and the youth bureau to not cut any services nor move the building. In other words, I want the same services, and I want in the same building on the south side in Liberty Center where it is not. So if you, that's your starting point, and then if you could please explore options of maybe finding alternative ways to provide that same service for less money, and bring that back to council for us to discuss, as well as please include the youth board in your discussions, so they have some input on it. Because I personally am not comfortable for cutting anything unless they have looked at it and they agree, or they, you know, are consensus with the youth advisory board that they are an understanding what's going on. Okay, so that's just how I feel, does anyone else want to add, and else got something to add about a meeting? And I'm gonna let you go after we discuss, if that's okay, real quick? Go ahead.
I agree with you one percent.
I mean, I'm just directing, because if you recall, we made this similar direction in an executive session, because there were employees involved, that situation is now changed, so now we can publicly discuss it, and I would like to be, go on record as what is officially being requested of the city manager to look into, so there's no mistakes, no misunderstandings. Same building, same service, or better, and if possibly for less money. If we can't do it for less money, then we'll discuss, we'll talk about it. El, did you want to add something?
Yes, Council President, thank you. I had a discussion today with the Youth Bureau President, Dave Twitchell, and it's important to understand that on the, on the youth board, both Dave Twitchell and Paula Fisher have given probably over twenty years total service to the board. Dave has three suggestions, and that's all they are, are suggestions from the youth board for us. One of whom is to, is to sever as of January first, an agreement with the county as planned by Rachel and Jocelyn, okay? And we restore the full-time position from Lydia Shaw, and a planned reopening of the Liberty Center. Now again, they're, they're well aware of COVID, and they're also well aware of the budget restraint constraints that we're gonna be facing. What they'd like to do, as much as possible, is retain the Liberty Center and as many subprograms as possible. Now, one of the things that, when we talk to all these people, everyone, all of us, we're not trying to misogynize egos here, all we're trying to do is what is best won for the children, the youth of Batavia, and for the city taxpayers, the budget. One of the, one of the ideas that, if we involve the Y, that the youth bureau, the youth board, continue to, continue to be in place, that the youth board, with, with the dedication and experience of, of the members of that board, they sit with the Y and have a good advisory. At the same time, the council should maintain a member on that board to report to council.
Right.
Now again, everything is, everything is give and take, and no one here wants anything more than what's best, again, as said before, for the children and for, and for the taxpayer. more than what's best again, as said before, for the children and for, and for the taxpayer. We know that this budget is devastating, and everyone, we're together, sometime next month, I think the fifteenth, Rachel, we're gonna have a meeting with the youth board, and hopefully we can come up with one compromise that works, you know? Obviously, no one's happy with everything that comes out of it, but whatever happens, we've at least worked together and made some headway.
Well, at this point, we're just directing.
Right.
Or look into it and report back. That information is noted. Just be advised, I believe the meeting on the fifteenth is their regular board meeting.
Correct.
We might want to schedule another meeting before that, because that might be too much for that one meeting, but that's something we need to look into. And also, I would just ask the public and the youth board's patience, because right now, our, my main priority as a council member is the safety of the community under this pandemic. That is taking number one priority right now, at best. And I've talked to members of the youth board recently, and I think we're in agreement. There's really not much that's gonna be able to happen with the youth board until spring. It doesn't mean we should wait till spring to discuss it, but we have to understand, right now, we are in a little bit more of a situation, then we have to take care of that first, and the youth board is definitely on that priority list. So that's just understood, and Rachel's making notes over there, so obviously that's a start, and it's up to Rachel then to follow the direction of council and to look into it. Bob?
Mr. President, I'd like to say two things. One, I'd like all of council to get a spreadsheet of the cost involved, so we all know that we're spending so much in payroll for the summer help over, so much, because right now, at least I have clueless as to what a lot of that is. Two, before any outside organizations approach, I'd rather see that that was done on an RFP, because there may be other organizations that would be interested in that also, and then one party would have a preferred advantage over someone else coming into it.
The problem with that, I see, is we already are in contract with the Y for what we're doing right now, so how would we be bringing in another person to be in contract with another person? Now we're talking two contracts.
We only, I mean, right now, from what I can tell, we have the memorandum of understanding that you signed, agreed to, and with council's knowledge, and that, of course, can be terminated at short notice, but also, I'd like to just see, I mean, if we're gonna make some cuts, we have to spec it out that everybody would treat it the same. From what I've been told, it's commercial corporations that run youth programs for schools and different things. I know.
Yeah, yeah, we should evolve this. Let's let the city manager look into these things and report back. This is not a one-meeting deal. This is definitely something that's gonna need back and forth, especially with the youth board actively involved in it, and, and I'm not gonna be comfortable with anything that they're not aware of and that they don't at least take a hard look at and, and give us some kind of advice on. So that's, that's, goes without saying. But I don't know where that all got mixed up, because that's where we were anyway, and I don't know where the confusion.
And if there is a spreadsheet that's probably available, I'd love to see that.
Well, and again, that's a great idea, but I think we're, we're way ahead of, we're just getting started. So there is no plan, and there is, there's been a lot of talk going back and forth, but I have not seen a plan. I have no plan to look at it, whether I like it or not, there's just been...
I'm just saying the cost.
No, I get it, I get it, so...
Yeah, I'd be happy to provide that.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, I'm thinking about what Bob said, in a different organization opening up RFP, the fact that City Church has been running that organization for years and had an outstanding program for all the kids would be great. I certainly, definitely do not want it to move from that area. There is a lot of children, their parents don't drive, they need to have that center, we don't need to have the kids out on the street, they need something structured for them, so they can become really...
Something positive.
Outstanding. That's right, a lot of positivity in those words, and the fact that, you know, they can become responsible young adults and give them structure there, but I certainly do not want it to move from that area.
Well, it's been in existence for pretty much all of my life, and I'd hate to see it go away on my watch, so...
That's right.
I would, like I said, the direction is to look at alternate cost-saving measures to provide the exact same service in the exact same building with no loss of service. And if they can, if you can save us money doing that, I would want at least hear those options. And the rest of council, report back to us, and again, the youth board will be involved in this, and you are our liaison, unless you want some help. I volunteer to assist you. If you want me to come to a meeting here and there, or if you can't make it, please let me know, I will fill in for you, so that we always have somebody there that can report back to council.
Thank you.
Okay, does anyone else have anything? So we understand what that's all about, right?
That's right.
Okay. A journey? Mr. Canelli, seconded by Mr. Beely, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christians?
Perez?
Yes.
Baikowski?
Yes.
Janikowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Visino?